I don't know the details exactly, look, he texted me this morning. So I told her that, so I don't know any of the details. I think it's great. Our police would be great doing that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's a given, actually, I'd allow them to do that. You know, I mean, they could schedule it so it's not interfering with any kind of production that they're doing here or something, you know? His brother passed away. Yeah, he texted me this morning.
His brother was his...
Yeah. Sure did. I texted him back and everything, but I haven't heard anything else from him on this. You know, I would think we would send something, surely, if we wanted to get the details on it, you know, but I don't know if he's going to be buried like around here or something. Yeah, he was at Canton Hall. I don't think he had any body else.
One time, one.
Yeah. Yeah. Didn't close?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go do it. If I could have your attention, please, we'll, we'll call the meeting to order. This is our regular council meeting, September the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman? Okay.
Yeah?
You turned it back off.
May we bow? Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here. We ask that you be with those that cannot attend. We thank you for such a beautiful city and great weather, the touch of fall that's in the air, and the colors that are coming alive. We ask that you be with us tonight and help us make the right decisions to help guide this city to even a better place to live. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
You know, tonight, there is a, actually, an empty seat in these council chambers that would normally be filled. One of our citizens and very loyal city council attendees is conspicuously absent. Jack Fancher Jr. passed away since our last meeting on September the sixth. Jack had an extreme love for this city, his family and his church. He was extremely active in city and community affairs. He served on several boards of the city, of which we are certainly grateful to have had him. He did a tremendous job for us. Some of those committees included the Historical Preservation Commission, Stormwater Advisory Board, City Variance Board, and I'm sure there are others that I didn't name. He was also an avid volunteer for the Cherokee County Arts Council and the Cherokee County Historical Society, and many other activities. He truly, truly loved this community, and that vacant seat would probably have been back right next to Richard Kemp back there. And so, but, but his absence is certainly noted. He, he, he loved the city so much, it's more than you could really imagine, and it showed in the things that he did for the city. He will be missed by everyone that knew him, especially those related and close to the city. All right. Now, item, the next item on the agenda is recognition of retirement of Criminal Investigations Administrative Assistant Judy Stanfield. Chief?
Mayor, Council, thank you. Ms. Stanfield, if you can come forward. Today's kind of a bittersweet day. Ms. Judy Stanfield has been with the agency now for thirteen years, and has served this agency diligently. She always has a smile on her face. And today, we're going to recognize her for her, her years of service here at the organization. I've been here, this, I'm going on two and a half years, and many of the people that I've talked to that have been here for many years. Everyone has always said, if you're having a bad day, talk to Judy. Because Judy puts things in perspective, as far as how life is, and what the important, what's important. What's important now, and family, and, and friends, and work. So, I know she's like the, the mother over there in our Criminal Investigations Division. All the guys look, look toward her, and I, I, I feel certain that that division would not run like it does, or has, without, with Judy, with Judy not there, so. But we, we definitely have someone coming in that's gonna, gonna fill those shoes very, more than capable, but I'm telling you, just in my short time that I've been here, Judy's always there. First, we got there about the same time every morning and left about the same time, and we had some, some good conversations in the short time that I've known her, and it's been a privilege. So, with that said, Judy, we want to... Just a little token of our affection for you. This is presented to Administrative Assistant Ms. Judy Stanfield for your outstanding thirteen years of service and dedication to the Police Department and citizens of Canton. Thank you.
You go right ahead.
Sure. Just a, just a couple more things. I have a recognition and then an attention order ceremony for promotion to corporal. Officer Sam Snell, if you can step forward, sir? This, uh, Sam Snell, he is our newest officer. He has graduated the Academy here recently, and he's been with the organization since August first. He has worn many hats since he's been here. He was our Parking Enforcement Officer, and has expressed an interest to, to go to the Academy, has completed the Academy, and is now on our field training program. One thing that we, we think's really, is very, I guess you'd say neat about Officer Snell, I don't know where I got neat from, but he, you started our Explorer Program when you were how old?
Sixteen.
He was sixteen when he started our Explorer Program, and, and the agency has been able to cultivate him all the way up through to where he is now as a, in field training to become a, a certified solo officer with our department, and we think it's important to do that. So that's, that's what we're doing toward the future, and this is a good example of, of how that program is working. So, again, welcome Officer Snell to the, to the ranks. I just thought it was important the mayor and council will see your face, and the citizens to also see you. So, welcome aboard. Lastly, if I can have Officer Jesse Hamilton step forward. Officer Hamilton has been with the, with the Police Department for three years now. Just recently, we conducted several assessments for the, the position of corporal. Officer Hamilton has successfully met the criteria and passed all the components in the process to become a corporal in the Police Department, and I congratulate you for that. So, Assistant Chief?
Attention orders, date seventeen September two thousand and fifteen to Officer Jesse Hamilton. Reference promotion to corporal. Giving special trust and confidence in the fidelity and abilities of Officer Jesse Hamilton. I do hereby promote Officer Hamilton effective this seventeenth day of September two thousand and fifteen to rank a corporal in the Canton Police Department. Corporal Jesse Hamilton will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which promoted by doing and performing all manner of things therein to pertain. I do strictly charge, require, and expect Corporal Hamilton to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given by supervisors acting in accordance to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the Canton Police Department. Given under my hand the seventeenth day of September two thousand and fifteen. Congratulations.
First order of business for our new corporal is the pinning on, on of his badge, which is a symbol, shield for all of our, all police officers. And if I can have his father, Mr. Hamilton, sir, there he is, if I can have you step forward, sir, and pin the badge. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda is the consideration to approve the agenda, and I would like to amend the agenda. First of all, by deleting the mayor's report item, and by adding an executive session for litigation in real estate, and also by deleting item nine A, which, uh... Not nine, eight A. Oh, nine A, yeah, the discussion of requests of sentry communities. That, where they have asked that that item be removed. Okay. Are there any other additions or changes or to the agenda?
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Some more?
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. You have in your agenda package the minutes from September the third council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
On item nine E, it talks about reimbursing Main Street for July Fourth expenditures. Is that in tourism responsible for the July Fourth expenses, or is this something different than what I'm thinking?
Yeah. This was something different.
I just wanted to clear that out.
Yes. Okay. Any other? Okay. Alrighty.
Did we vote on that?
No.
We haven't voted yet, okay.
Move to approve.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Okay. The, our ten-minute public input period. We have one individual, Brian Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. A month ago, I brought up the, the subject of the noise from the construction site of the hospital, and I asked a couple of questions at that meeting, and I don't feel like I've had satisfactory answers. I'd like to read what I'm reading from the ordinance, section thirty-three, one thirty-five, "Construction or Repair of Buildings." "The erection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building other than between the hours of seven a.m. and six p.m. on weekdays, except as an urgent necessity in the interest of public health and safety, and then only with a permit from the city building official, shall be violation of this article. Such permit may be granted for a period not to exceed three days or less while the emergency continues, and may be removed by the mayor and city council for periods of three days or less while the emergency continues. If a building official determines that the public health and safety will not be impaired by the erection, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building, or the excavation of streets and highways from six to seven, and further determines that loss of or inconvenience shall result in any party and interests, the mayor and city council may grant permission for such work to be done from six to seven a.m. Upon application made at the time of the permit for work and applied for during progress of work." "A month ago, I asked, what evidence did the hospital or the construction crew, what evidence did they prove that they are incurring a loss? What I was provided was a letter with three sentences, and all it simply says is that, 'We respectfully ask that the contractors working on this new site be permitted to work outside of city's defined work hours during the full duration of the above referenced project. The ability to work outside of those areas is vital to the efficient construction and delivery of projects of this magnitude.'" That's not evidence. That's simply asking. I had a conversation with the representatives of the hospital. They told me that this was saving the hospital three million dollars, thereabouts. That's not a loss. That's business. There is no loss for them. All they're doing is saving money. I really would like to know what other evidence that they provided. Also, I'd like to know who determined that the public health would not be impacted. My lack of sleep is impacting my health. I'm waiting for answers. I've been waiting for a month now. The motion, the council approved a motion that states, "The hospital's request to work after hours," it's in the evening, it's not in the morning, "would be granted." I understand the need for pouring concrete. They're not pouring concrete every day. They're working at four a.m. and earlier every day. The other night, I think they worked all night long. It's abusive. I really think it needs to stop. The ordinance says that they need to apply for this for every three days. Are they making those applications? If so, I'd like to see that paperwork. Also, the last meeting that we were here, I asked for the zoning ordinance to be amended. I was serious. I would like to have the zoning ordinance amended to state that if anybody asks for work hours outside of the normal work period, letters should go out to anybody in the surrounding area. There has to be some type of notification to let others have an opinion and state their opinion of the board. I know you guys said you advertised it. I have no idea where you advertised it. I never saw it. Also, I'd like to see the, the ordinance amended that if there is a loss, I don't know why this city should have to bear it all. I think there should be some give and take. The hospital probably should have committed to our perks fund. It would be nice to see the two trails on each side of the Edda Wall over here connected. A few hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket to their three and a half million. I'm waiting for answers. When will I have my answers? Do I get one?
Oh, this, this, this period of time is simply for you to input to the council, and it will be up to the council then to determine if and when they respond back.
When will that happen? I mean...
This is not a dialogue.
You guys went behind closed doors last time, and I've seen no evidence of anything that was discussed or anything in the minutes. It's not on the agenda tonight, so I assume you guys think it's closed. I don't consider the case closed. I would like to have it resolved. I need to have some type of documentation. I think it's public, and it should, it should be provided to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, under the consent agenda, I will read these items on the consent agenda, and if there are any of those you wish to discuss further, let me know, and we will remove them. Item A, approval of alcoholic beverage excise tax audit by Georgia Municipal Association. Approval of intergovernmental disaster debris management plan. Approval of hotel motel tax fund FY two thousand and fifteen budget amendment. Approval of water and sewer FY two thousand and sixteen budget amendment. Item D, approval of city records management policy. And item F, approval to waive signage fee for Fields of Faith event. Are there any of those you would like to remove for further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some more?
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Under O Business, item A, discussion and possible action on the City of Canton, Georgia Department of Transportation mowing and maintenance agreement. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, this, again, is an opportunity for us to cut and spray on the right-of-ways as it relates to the interchanges that we currently don't have a mowing agreement on with, with GDOT, so this would give us the ability to cut at exit fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty. They will cut one to two times per year. This would allow us to cut when they're not cutting and make sure those right-of-ways are taken care of, just on the interchanges. We will not be cutting on the interstate. It will allow us to make those improvements and, and keep those nice and clean.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
I, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Billy, I think you might have answered this last time, but how many times do you anticipate mowing it, all of them, per year?
We feel like if we can, if we can spray, which is what we plan to do as we cut, that we could drop it down to maybe three times that we have to cut it, plus the two that they get it, and it would get, you know, five good cuttings a year on those right-of-ways.
It's mostly spring through fall. You don't cut much in the winter.
Correct.
And we can do that...
And then, and then as we get into the, to the winter time, you know, if there's stuff that we need to cut back, we can do that as well as it relates to...
And we think we can do that for twenty thousand a year, estimated?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and that, that twenty thousand estimate includes, you know, some equipment that, you know, extra blades and things like that that we would probably need to put in there. But, you know, from an investment standpoint, people notice you when they get off the interstate, and...
And we're going to build GDOT for this, too, right?
I'll let you, I'll let you send that letter.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Comment, question?
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item eight B, discussion and possible action regarding requests for city acceptance of Prominence Point private streets. Mr. Young? I'm sorry, Mr. Russ. I guess you're going to do that.
Probably, probably. The, the group from Prominence Point had called me or emailed me and asked if they should come here this evening, and I said it was not necessary. I'm really trying to save them some legal expense. The last time they came, I think they came with two lawyers. I'd rather have them save the legal expense and build a reserve fund. We, I'm going to ask for a motion tonight to postpone any decision on this action, mainly because we feel that there's a couple of big things we need to get settled. Number one is, how do we bring the Prominence Point streets up to city acceptance standards? And number two, how do they build some sort of reserve fund to pass on to the city so that we can maintain them, at least for a short period of time, after the turnover? So, we have requested, and they want to set up a meeting with Ferris and myself, to, to sit down and talk about the time element in terms of when they can get that together. They have never had a special assessment, but they didn't think that would be out of the question, but certainly it's going to take a little time to build a reserve fund. So, we just have to discuss that, and so I'm going to look for a motion tonight to postpone any decision on these streets in Prominence Court.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. All members voting for the motion. Item C, uh, discussion and possible action on the roll-off site, uh, cost to the residents. Uh, Councilman Russ?
Um, I worked with Jack on this one, and, uh, some months ago, I met with everybody involved.